Call to order the meeting of the Woodyotech School Committee. We all please join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
We join you through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is going to be public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's very difficult to hear you guys back here for whatever reason. My name is Bernard Cullen. I'm at 283 Weathersfield Street in Rowley. And I'm here basically because I was surprised at the speed with which the new SOI was being submitted. Now, history can repeat itself if we do not learn its lessons. Fees for the overwhelming defeat of the last proposal made by this board essentially were visible on October 30th when Whittier came to Rowley and presented. At that point, three issues were raised by both the Select Board and members of the audience, which included me. The first one was that there was insufficient discussion, communication, listening, consideration given to the needs and the interests of the towns themselves. It just wasn't there. And the result of that was, in Rowley, 94% of the people voted against that proposal. That's a massive, overwhelming defeat. And it should lead everybody to kind of consider, what's the best way forward? What's the lesson to be learned from that particular piece of history? Across the 11 towns, the vote was 75% against your proposal. And against the process which was used in order to put forward that proposal, the size of it, the impact, the consideration of the impact of that proposal on the towns. All that was on the table at that point, and it wasn't addressed then. Now, we've started a new process, a new cycle. I understand the MSBA process. It kind of places certain demands on you in terms of getting in the queue and the logistics associated with pulling together a proposal. But that doesn't change the requirement to communicate with the towns, to communicate with my town of Rowley, because this is a big, big ask. Our budgets are incredibly tight. And Whittier will represent, both in its operating costs and in the capital costs, a major hit on Rowley. So, what I ask basically is that you begin the process now of communicating with the town in a formal way, asking the selectmen to go on their agenda and present where you stand, what this SOI basically represents. But most important is that the agreement, the 1967 agreement, gets revisited seriously and significant changes are made in that agreement, because otherwise, history will repeat itself. We will not accept the fact that the formula leaves towns like Rowley, towns like Newburyport, or cities like Newburyport at a complete disadvantage. You will get the same result that you had on January the 23rd. There is no doubt in my mind that that will happen. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not really going to be impacted by the size of the funding that comes from the state. That obviously makes it slightly more digestible, but ultimately, you have to look and understand the budgets that the towns have to deal with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Good evening. I'm Cassandra Gold. I serve as the Mayor of Amesbury, and I live at 9 Gardner Street in Amesbury. I intended to be here to speak during your budget public hearing, but was slightly delayed. So regarding your budget, I just wanted to mention in particular that after reviewing the documents, it was notable to me that I did not see any offsets from fees, and have been told by the superintendent that the Whittier District does not collect fees for any extracurricular athletic participation. I know that it may not make a huge difference in your budget, but your participating communities do collect fees for these activities. And in a good faith effort to establish parity, I think it should be considered. We have had many conversations, of course, over the last few months and really year about the differences between the schools that we have and the ways we serve our students. And so, to ensure that all of our students have the same access and opportunities, the way we consider our schools, I think that our school committees should be working with a level playing field. And so I just suggest that consideration be given to fees and offsets that can be generated. While I'm here for your general meeting, I know that you have an SOI on your agenda, and I just want to speak in favor of that. The cities and towns and the district have been meeting to continue our conversations after the vote and that process regarding our regional agreement, and have been in conversation with Lieutenant Governor, the leadership in Northern Essex, and the leadership here at Whittier Tech. And in general, the conversation and the feedback about the proposal has been positive. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I'm sure the superintendent would relay similar sentiments from what we have heard in the few discussions that we have had. I have asked to just start from the outset, that we apply a lens of just ensuring that we are really approaching this with an understanding of the impact it will have on the other, you know, on the communities and our other schools, considering in particular our enrollment. There is a lot of language in the SOI about the opportunity to increase enrollment and capacity at Whittier Tech, and we all know the ripple effect that that has. So I want to make sure that we're really conscious about that. And also about curriculum alignment, in our other schools, we are really trying to take advantage of things like the Innovative Pathway Grants that the state is providing. And so we want to make sure that the programs we offer complement and not conflict each other, and how do we make those choices while you're making choices about programs too? I actually saw something in, I think it was the budget presentation, about a new program that I don't believe I had heard of yet, potentially Patty mentioned it at a presentation, but we've got to make sure we're really clear and aligned in communicating about those decisions too. So those are two things I just want to make sure we start with right at the beginning, and we carry that throughout this process as we think about the great potential that this has to providing access and opportunity for our students and for training our workforce. But again, in general, very positive feedback about this, and it did require some fast action from the leadership, so we really appreciate the cooperation that we've had from both institutions and from the state leadership. And happy to be with you tonight. Thanks for having me.
Real quick, were you suggesting across the board fees for curriculum, like sports and?
That is what we collect in our community for our high school. We do charge fees for athletics and for extracurricular activities. And an assessment of perhaps what other communities are doing, so that you could get a full picture of what's happening within the district, and then make a decision based on that would be.
I know, for instance, Haverhill charges, doesn't charge any fees across the board. We did at one point, and it was an impediment for students participating in activities. Even when we offered it for free, there was a stigma that those kids didn't want to come and ask for it for free. So I think it's a, I understand it from the financial standpoint, but I also think we need to make sure that we're not doing anything that stops those kids from participating in after-school activities, because we all know if they participate in after-school activities, chances are they'll succeed more academically.
I don't disagree at all, but the reality for many of these small communities with very small districts is that we have to charge those fees. And so a lot of them, if we, and we are starting to survey our students who are applying to Whittier, for why, and some of the feedback we get is that they apply here because frankly, it's cheaper. They don't have to pay, we also charge a bus fee. And in this year's budget, we're actually eliminating our high school busing, completely eliminating busing. Not that you have to pay to get to high school, you actually need to get yourself there. We cannot afford busing. So we charge a fee for busing, we charge a fee for athletics, and we charge a fee for extracurriculars. So the reality is that our students and our families have to make that decision. And when you look at the enrollment trends, which I know you saw in that budget presentation, because I looked at the slides myself, the reality is that, yes, those are making, those are impacting families' decisions, and that is impacting our enrollment and our finances, and that, those finances are affecting the decisions that you're able to make, which we saw at the ballot box. So it does need to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for, anyone else here for public comment? What else for public comment? Last call. Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is going to be approval of minutes, March 13th, 2024, minutes of the Budget Workshop. Is there a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Irvin, seconded by Mr. Murphy. Please call a roll on that.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Oh.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinja?
Abstain.
Ms. Delai?
Abstain.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Right.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Sloboski?
Yes.
Passes. Next item on the agenda is going to be March 13th, minutes of the regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. O'Connor, seconded by?
Seconded.
Mr. Sloboski. Please call a roll.
Mr. Sloboski?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Right.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Abstain.
Ms. Coppinja?
Abstain.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Abstain.
And Mr. Early?
Yes.
Passes. Next item is going to be the March 27th, 2024, minutes of the Special School Committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Irvin, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Discussion, seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Abstain.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinja?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Abstain.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Right.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Sloboski?
Yes.
Passes. Next item is the Treasurer's Report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. O'Connor, seconded by?
Lawrence.
Yes. Any discussion on, seeing none, please call a roll.
Mr. Sloboski?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Right.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Delai?
Yes.
Ms. Coppinja?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Passes. Next item under Old Business is the School Committee Self-Evaluation. Everybody should have a copy of it. I believe, just for the record, one person may have put.
I will speak publicly for this with a huge fight of humility. I believe I reversed the order of the numbers in reevaluating my results, so anything that was supposed to be a one was a four. Anything that was a three should have been a two. So I will just ask for, on the record, that, well, anybody, my husband is taking great pleasure in noting that I replied "I don't know" so many times to a survey about education, and as he would say, that doesn't come out of my mouth very often. So I, just to make it public, I believe I incorrectly completed the survey by reversing the order of the numbers. And so that, I will request next year maybe that the language be associated with the little bubbles, so that I don't reverse the order. But in general, I did have agreement with most of the statements, not the "I don't know" statements.
Okay.
Give me a huge mullet in.
Did anybody have any discussion on the results? Anything that stuck out to them that they wanted to speak about in the survey results at all? Mr. Early?
Ms. Lowell, thank you for saying that, because I did have that. I did have a lot of questions on that. Thank you.
Me too.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is going to be the Student Representative Report. You're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other members of the School Committee. For spring sports, the softball team opened its season this week against Malden Catholic. The team consists of seven seniors, four juniors, two sophomores, and two freshmen. We have 58 student athletes strive for the program this year. For baseball, the first four games of the season were postponed due to weather issues. The varsity team has six seniors returning, seven juniors, and four sophomores. The program has a full JV team and a freshman team with strong numbers on both teams. Due to weather issues, the track and field season may not open until after a return from the spring break. We have many returning athletes and great leadership on the team. They are looking forward to a spectacular season with their new crew. The boys volleyball is off to a great start with its second-year program, playing tough against all the great opponents they have facing this day. "I know this will be a great season," says head coach Kevin Bradley. This attitude and work ethic are unbelievable. Watch out for the Wildcats. The boys lacrosse team opened their season on 4-9 against Notre Dame, which was yesterday. Girls lacrosse had a slow start due to game cancellations. However, the first game will be played today. More players registered this season than any previous season. Team is looking forward to the continued growth of the program. For the clubs, the Multicultural Club hosted their first culture night on Friday, March 22nd, which was a great success. Over a dozen cultures were represented. Families and friends came to share their cultures, and many students and staff participated in dance, activities, and food tastings. Many thanks to those who came early and stayed late to decorate, prepare, and clean up. Thanks to the DI Coordinator Jonathan Warren and the custodial staff. They hope this can be an annual event. Interact students joined the Haverhill Rotary Club meeting on March 21st at the Haverhill Country Club. Students enjoyed a launch-on meeting and spoke on the club about the community events done this year. The chess club continues to meet every Tuesday after school. Membership remains consistent. We will have two more tournaments before the year's end, a blitz tournament and a classical round robin tournament. Student government are hard at work planning a teacher appreciation event for May and getting ready for elections for the 24-25 school year, which will take place in June after the seniors graduate. They will elect officers for the classes of 2025, 2026, and 2027. The ski club had a wonderful season. They had three successful trips with over 40 students per trip. They are looking into club sweatshirt orders. Whittier Tech Drama Club's Mean Girls High School Edition was a hit. On opening night, they had a full house and opened the balcony to overflow tickets holders. Now onto the senior talent show. Additions for the May 24 show will be held after the April break. Students in the art club are beginning to create Mandela designs, as well as continuing to create poetry. The yearbook layout is complete and on to printing. The books will be shipped in May with an expected delivery date of May 20th. The spring sport photos for the year of 2025 and the layout process for next year's book have begun. In celebration of National Poetry Month, the Poetry Club gave the main office poets and poems to display on the electronic sign that welcomes people in Whittier. In addition, they celebrate National Poetry Month by writing poems based on creative prompts presented by poets who have influenced the contemporary poetry scene lately. One prompt even challenged us to include the N.Y.T. connections Word of the Day in their poem. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job as always. Next item on the agenda, Madam Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, I have personnel action. I have hires for special education AEP trainers, Saturday school vacation attendance makeup monitors, our summer CTI program. Budget update, the public hearing on the FYI 25 budget was held earlier this evening, and the budget books will be distributed to cities and towns as soon as possible. Whittier had 23 students take the Biology MCAS retest, and 10 students passed. The 13 students who were not successful will retake the exam in June. On March 26th and 27th, 315 10th graders took the ELA MCAS exam. These same students will take the Math MCAS exam on May 21st and 22nd. Superintendent's update, on Thursday, March 14th, I attended the MAVA General Membership Meeting in Marlborough. We had the opportunity to honor two Whittier Tech Presidential Scholars. One of those scholars is Nathan Shmeranko from Groveland and Gabrielle Orton from Haverhill. This is a huge honor, and on a side note, I was with both of these students last summer, I would say June, and when they both won gold, national gold medals through the Skills USA competition. So we're really proud of those students. On Friday, March 15th, I attended the St. Patrick's Day Breakfast along with Kara Cosmas for the Exchange Club of Haverhill. On Monday, March 18th, I attended the Merrimack Finance Meeting along with Kara Cosmas and School Committee Member Mike Rossi. Thank you, Mr. Rossi. On Tuesday, March 19th, I attended the 19th Annual Women's Educational Leadership Network Conference through MASSS in Framingham. On Wednesday, March 20th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Board of Directors Meeting in Lawrence. Along with John Lavoy, the Superintendent at Greater Lawrence, will be the guest speakers on April 26th to discuss vocational education in the Merrimack Valley. On Thursday, March 21st, I attended the multi-chambered Legislative Dinner at Blue Ocean along with Kara Cosmas, and we saw Mayor Gold at that dinner. On Friday, March 22nd, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable in Danvers. On April 26th, we were going to have the Legislative Luncheon here with our legislators, but they will be in session, so we're replanning that night, that luncheon. On Tuesday, March 26th, I attended the Open Meeting Law Training online with Lisa Rand. Thank you, Lisa, for setting that up for us. On Wednesday, March 27th, I attended the Mayor's Hope Task Force in Haverhill. And this is a monthly meeting, and it can be in person or online. On Friday, March 29th, I hosted an area superintendent luncheon at Whittier. In attendance was Elizabeth McAndrews from Amesbury, Dr. Brian Blake from Ipswich, Sean Gallagher from Newburyport, Dr. Justin Bethallman from Penn Tucket, and Brian Fordette from Triton. On April 1st, we held our budget meeting here, breakfast with town managers. In attendance was Neil Harrington from Salisbury, Carol MacLeod from Merrimack, Shaw Wright from Amesbury, and Angus Jennings from West Newbury. On Tuesday, April 2nd, we had to cancel our budget meeting because we had to shut off the water and close the school. As many of you know, a vehicle hit the fire hydrant and created sort of a geyser, and to shut off the water, we had a little bit of trouble, but by the time we shut it off, we really needed to evacuate the building. I really want to say, you know, the staff did an amazing job, and I'll get to that a little bit later. On April 3rd, I attended the Regional Agreement Meeting in Amesbury, and there is another meeting to look at the regional agreement set for May 1st. On April 5th through the 7th, I attended the Math CTE Conference at Patriots Place in Foxborough, and we were able to honor one of our students at that conference. On Tuesday, April 9th, I met with Lane Glenn, the President of Northern Essex, to start thinking about planning a future collaboration together. And then today, we met with mayors, town managers, legislators, to be with the Lieutenant Governor, to discuss how we could collaborate, what kind of the process we'll be going through, letting everyone know that we would be submitting a statement of interest to MSBA. We won't hear anything about that statement of interest till about December. So, you know, we didn't want to lose any time by putting that off. But in the meantime, we will be looking at putting out an RFP to look at, you know, what this might look like. There are so many questions, we want to narrow that down before we get, hopefully get into the pipeline with MSBA. So again, on April 2nd, a vehicle hit the fire hydrant on the access road. The city of Havel tried to shut off the water on Amesbury Line Road, but they were unable because of the age of the pipe. To shut off the water, we needed to shut off water to the spool. There was a thought that this could be done quickly, and the reality set in that it would take us much longer. We had to dismiss students and staff. Were able to make this decision by 8:15 a.m., and we were able to evacuate the building by 9:15 a.m. So we're really just so pleased with our Bus Transportation Coordinator Jenny Green. She was able to get all the bus drivers returned, and we were able to make this happen within an hour. I also want to thank the cooperation of our staff and students. It was very orderly, and people just went right to work, and it was very good to see. On Thursday, April 4th, we had originally planned a two-hour delay, and as you know, the weather that morning was a little bit, I think it's almost like it got worse as the morning went on. At about 6:00 a.m., we lost electricity. At that point, the weather conditions did seem to be deteriorating, and we had no timeline for when our electricity would be put back on. So we made the decision to cancel school. Electricity was restored on Friday morning at about 2:00 a.m. I really want to thank Bob Hardy and his team for working so hard for what seems like at least 24 hours. I mean, one of the times he called me when the electricity went out, he called me not even two minutes later and said, "There's a tree down blocking the access road." So it was very chaotic that morning, and I was actually happy that we ended up having to cancel school that morning. So we were supposed to have an Advisory Board Dinner on Thursday night. We have since rescheduled that Advisory Board Meeting for May 14th. Won't be the same kind of a dinner. It will be scaled back quite a bit, but we do want to make sure that we get an Advisory Board before the end of the year. So a light meal along with a meeting, and again, I want to thank everybody for being so accommodating. For a few, we have a few new members of the School Committee. There is a training called Charting the Course through MASSE. Lisa, I think, has provided you information on that course. If you're interested in taking that, I really recommend that. And then Lisa has also posted the link for Open Meeting Law Training in our Google Classroom. So, and I would also encourage you to participate in that as well. I have an admissions update. So our admissions letters went out at this point. We had a total of 697 applications. We accepted 393 students. Are there any questions I can answer?
I just want to ask, I know the students don't have to respond until they have, until early May to respond, and will you be giving each of the towns and cities updates on what those numbers look like?
Right.
When we do the budget meeting?
Right. So as soon as we get our numbers, we try to make sure. We do that in the spring, but then we also do it on the October 1, the official October 1 report.
Yeah, but just in terms of looking at how many graduates and how many students are planning to, because they don't, even though they get, as they used to say, invited to the dance, they don't all come.
Right.
Just have those numbers of an idea as we go into the summer, how many are saying that they're going to come.
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Ms. Superintendent, on the stipends, have we just talked, are those in the budget now?
Are those the CTI stipend?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's separate from the budget.
So it's all under grants?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Also, before you today, as we have spoken about a little bit, there is a statement of interest that we need to file by Friday. It is very quickly, a quick turnaround from our January 23rd vote, but we do feel like we don't want to lose any time, because as I say, time is money. So we want to make sure that this, we do this again. I really want to thank the town managers, the mayors, the Lieutenant Governor, Lane Glenn, for really kind of rallying around, you know, what, how can we make this happen? And this is something that we know we need to do for our region and for our workforce. We had a meeting this afternoon with town managers and mayors and legislators. You know, some issues came up, you know, one being the regional agreement. There's some concerns about moving forward until that regional agreement is taken care of, also providing workforce training for the region and making sure that we are doing exactly that. There was questions about our admissions policy and making sure that the admissions policy is fair and equitable, and as the Mayor Gold said, sensitivity to the local districts and enrollment and curriculum as we move forward. So those were some key takeaways from that meeting. There is a lot of work to be done, but I think everybody understands the importance of the work that happens at Whittier Tech and wants to find a path forward. But we all know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we can get there. And we are just in the very preliminary stages of at least having the discussion.
Mr. Early?
You said they were talking about the regional agreement. Were they trying to abolish it? They also have to realize every town has to sign off.
Everyone understands that.
Thank you.
I'll just echo, I think, Mayor Gove's sentiments about the enrollment questions, and I do not question, any student who wants a vocational education should get one, but when I was reading the, should have the opportunity for it. And reading the new Statement of Interest, the language did jump out at me about increasing enrollment, and I know there was a lot of discussion about not doing that in this prior Statement of Interest, that we wanted to just stay the course for our enrollment, not try to increase it. But in the same vein, looking at it being aligned with Northern Essex, I was wondering, is that language around increasing enrollment more around increasing access to the programs because it will be on the Northern Essex, you know, with the alignment with the Northern Essex campus? And so ultimately, and I know this is more visionary than reality at this point, but would it be that students, even if they remain in their sending schools, would have an increased opportunity for access like we do right now with the senior program, that students come over and have an opportunity to do the exploratory and decide if they want to continue technical education? Or, you know, other programs like the Early College Program, because if the vocational campus is there, there'll be an opportunity for students to have access to it where it's a little more restrictive where we are right now. So...
I don't think there's any ideas that are off the table. While I did hear, and that was one of our decisions, to same-size with the former building project, there was a lot of feedback that people felt like we should have increased our enrollment. So right now, we are just in the early stages of having the discussions, and I think, you know, we do have a waitlist, we do have people that are truly concerned, want to attend Whittier Tech, we have admissions process, but I also hear the concerns of our cities and towns, that they are struggling with enrollment. And I, all along, have said, "I don't want to hurt our cities and towns' high schools." That's not what building a new building or a new project should ever do. But we're right at the beginning stages, because I can say, there's other cities and towns, this is a hard thing, when you have eleven, trying to make everybody happy, because there's others that really wanted increased enrollment. So, you know, those are things that we are in the very, we're just, this is a concept. You know, we're going to have to narrow that down in the next six months, and then further narrow that down if we get invited into the feasibility study. No idea is off the table.
Mr.
I think I naively misunderstood the press, that this would sort of be a state community college venture, and so I assumed SOI and all that was not involved, but obviously, it still has to go through that process.
Right.
Despite where it might be or who it's in partnership with.
I think it's, the cities and towns are going to have to contribute, right? But this provides us an opportunity to have other resources, the community college resources, state resources, MSBA resources. But, you know, again, we don't, it's so broad right now that I don't know how to narrow it down just yet.
I just, I had to comment too, my recollection, part of the reason for the non-increase was also financial, because the more people, the bigger the school, the more expensive it was.
That's true, yeah.
Mr. Early.
Yes, I just wanted to commend the Superintendent and your team, having done these before, the quick turnaround to be able to do this, to get our foot in the door, to preserve our opportunity potentially, get additional revenue from the state. And I know there's concerns about the quick, the rapid, you know, turnaround of doing another SOI, but it is, as we all know, a Statement of Interest, right? It's a Statement of deficiencies in your building, despite the fact those deficiencies still exist, and so I really appreciate that you went through all that effort to get that done as quickly as you did. Really minor, but I just, on page nineteen, under Priority Seven, Question Two, I think you meant to say, please refer to Priority Five, Question Two, versus, please refer to Priority Seven, yeah, seven.
Yes, you are right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to mention on, as far as whether we're going to increase or not increase, we haven't allowed any school choice, so it's options from outside the communities. Obviously, the communities and then the districts want people. I work for one of the largest employees in the country, and we are struggling to find tradespeople. So there's definitely a huge need for tradespeople. So personally, I think we should increase a little bit. Obviously, balance it with the cities and towns, because we want to make sure we do it right. But I definitely see the need for it, so.
Mr. Irvin, did you have your handle?
I'm just wondering if it's appropriate for a vote this time, to move this forward?
What do you mean?
Is it appropriate to have a vote to move this forward? So I can go with this point to move the Statement of Interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Motion made by Mr. Irvin, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by a bunch of different people, but...
Mrs. O'Connor.
Give it to Mrs. O'Connor.
Point of order, do you have to actually read that vote exactly as they say in the form of vote? Or Kara will read it? I know the MSBA is very pernicious about that.
Yes, you do, hundred percent, you have to read it. Yeah, you're right.
You want to do this first?
Yeah, I'm going to have her read it into the record, and then we'll have discussion on it further.
Okay, resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest dated April fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School located at one fifteen Amesbury Line Road, Haverhill, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, as noted in Priorities Five and Seven of this application regarding total renovation of the existing building and system updates project, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. All right, there was discussion on this?
No, I want to talk about something else.
All right, any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Slubowski.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Passes. Mr. Early, what topic was your discussion on?
On the admissions, that we just came out on April first. I want to commend the School Superintendent and her team. I'll tell you why I get a lot of calls, no question about it. We accepted over three hundred and ninety, am I correct?
Three ninety-three.
I know it was over three ninety, and I think that's the highest we've ever accepted. And a lot of people that are on the waiting list, I believe, if they just stay a little patient, things could happen. Thank you.
Is that it for you, Madam Superintendent?
That is it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Principal Leganes.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your appointment, and rest of the new School Committee members, and Ms. Lynch, Superintendent Lynch. I'm here just to, if you can believe it, to try to get the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar for next year. So I know you have it in your packet. What I did is I just kind of highlighted a few things of our new teacher training that will start August twentieth, twenty-first. Also, our first day for kids, all the kids, is August twenty-eighth. This is next school season, and staff comes back August twenty-sixth, so it seems pretty quick. And then, as you can go throughout the entire, all the months, you can see that there are MCAS dates and also retests. Those are dictated by the state, so I don't have those yet, so I will fill those in once I get them from my guru, my Associate Principal, Ms. Jensen, and also obviously from the state. I'll have those in there to have all the MCAS. Other than that, any questions on the entire next year?
Any discussion on the school calendar? Is there a motion to approve the school calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Murphy, Mrs. Lowell seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Business Manager Kara Cosmas. Come on back up.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee, first of all, congratulations and welcome to the new committee members. And because we have some new people, just briefly, we do a variance analysis every three months, which we bring to the committee, and it basically looks at the pluses and minuses in the accounts. The pluses are in green, the minuses are in yellow, and typically, I do quarterly transfers between major functional accounts, but we're so close to the end of the year that we are very much on track, and this is the time of year when I start to look at our grants and closing out our grants and making sure that we utilize our grants. So as we go forward, there will be a lot of changes to these numbers, and I usually do a catch-up, I usually do an all-encompassing transfer at the end of the year, because as we have monies and grants, we shift monies from this budget to grants, and then what we also do is, because we free up money in the district budget, we do a lot of pre-purchasing of supplies, things that people will need next year, we'll buy them before the school year ends. So I just wanted to mention that the transfer request will be done at the end of the year to balance the accounts. We're on track, we're in very good shape, and that is what I have for you for the variance analysis. I don't know if anybody had any questions.
Any questions?
Kara, briefly, do you have an E and D number?
I'm sorry?
E and D number.
I didn't hear him.
Do you have an E and D?
E and D.
I do not have an E and, well, I do have an E and D. It is on your report. It was a million, it should have been on the financial report that you had. Yes. It was certified at one million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight, and I do anticipate that at the next meeting, I will be bringing you a transfer request to move some of that to stabilization, and maybe even capital projects, depending upon what is happening after the Superintendent and I meet about what we think will be the cost to do an RFP with Northern Essex.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Early.
The bus drivers, homeless, bus drivers, transportation.
We are required by law to do that. We don't have enough bus drivers, so we have to...
The numbers are...
They are very high. We have to contract it out. We don't have enough bus drivers. However, Mr. Early, I'll also be bringing a transfer to you. We also have a balance that remains in our transportation revolving account. As you know, I always bring that to you at the end of the year, too. We will probably need some of that money for this, and we will probably buy, we need to replace, I think, one or two of our vans, so that's coming in May as well.
One at a time.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's see, thank you, Ms. Cosmas.
Okay, and one other thing, I always like to keep the commi, oh, I'm sorry.
That's great, I just had a quick question. I got the yellow coating, is, are things that are in deficit green?
There are, those are funds that are potentially available to offset at the end of the year, the deficits, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. I like to keep the committee apprised of what we're doing with the Whittier Tech Educational Foundation, again, for our new members. We have a foundation. We typically assist over one hundred families at holiday time with things that they need, including food, and sometimes for our students, gifts and supplies. And last year, I believe, we awarded thirty-one thousand dollars in scholarships out of the foundation. So I know you've probably gotten used to us doing a Kentucky Derby event, but we're not doing the Kentucky Derby event this year. Instead, if you like to play trivia, we will be having a trivia night on Friday, May tenth, at six PM, at the Elts Hall in Haverhill. The tickets are thirty-five dollars each, or three hundred for a table of ten. You can go onto our website, under Whittier Tech, under Foundation, and you can register, but we're already up to about eleven tables, and I think the most we can have is seventeen to twenty. I know Ms. Crosby's going to give me the evil eye over there. So if you think that might be something you want to do, or put a table together, I encourage you to come have some fun with us. We'll raise a few thousand dollars, we'll have some raffles, we'll have a good time, we'll probably have some snacks. You know how we like snacks around here, and how we love to show off our culinary. So that's coming up, so I just wanted to share that with all of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the May annual agenda items are going to be the appointment of the subcommittees, school calendar, although we just did that, so that won't be there. Superintendent evaluation, we're going to be setting those out, so you should be getting the form for the Superintendent's evaluation, and then I believe we'll be welcoming a new student representative sometime in May. All right. Subcommittee reports, there's nothing listed under executive, instructional personnel, Ms. Tru's not here, plant operations, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, we had plant operations meeting last month, and the minutes are in your packet, make a motion to...
Motion made by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mrs. Lowell. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Slubowski.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
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 Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. Lai. Ms. Dain. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Early.
Passes. Next item, policy, Mr. Irvin.
Mr. Chairman, we have several things to do tonight. We have the minutes of March thirteenth to approve...
Motion made by Mr. Irvin to approve those, seconded by Ms. Lowell. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes.
Also, this evening, we have the second and final reading of the following listed policies in your packet, AB, people in the school district, down to free and reduced price food services, EFC. That will be a second and final vote on these policies in your packet.
Motion by Mr. Irvin to approve about twenty-five different policies.
AB through EFC.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald. Any discussion on any of the policies on the motion on the table? Seeing none, please call the roll on this one.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Lowell.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Slubowski.
Passes. Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Chairman, also in your packet this evening, we have listed policies for the first reading, DJI, Regional School District Purchasing, and that ends with IMG, animals, no, correction, JIC, Student Discipline. Put those up for the first vote, reading.
Motion to accept first reading?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Lowell, seconded by Carpenter. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor for the first reading? First reading only, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes.
Mr. Chairman, as a member of the instructional personnel, we did meet this evening, and we reviewed electives for juniors and seniors, half semester electives, and also year-long electives, so I think that's important, at least to get into the record.
Okay, noted for the record. Next item on the agenda is going to be meeting dates. Regular School Committee meeting is going to be Wednesday, May eighth, at six thirty PM. Under new business, no new business has been posted.[1781.15] new business, no new business has been posted. Executive session, there is no need for an executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Can you withdraw that motion for me real quick?
Next month.
Oh, sure.
Plant operations meeting.
Do you want to do that at 6:00?
Yep.
Motion made by Mr. Irvin, seconded by Mr. Fitzgerald to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned.